I call the November 28, 2017, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And our invitation tonight will be given by Pastor Michael Porter, Sr., of Twine Memorial Holy Temple. And I'll ask my colleagues to stand for the invitation. Then I'll ask Councilman Bill Moody to lead us in the pledge allegiance. Thank you.
Let us bow our heads. Eternal heavenly Father, we thank you for your loving kindness and allowing us to come together on this evening. We pray, blessing upon council to God, we pray you will look on them in a special way as they continue, dear God, to lead us and guide us through this great city. We pray, Lord, for the citizens that are here tonight as well. We pray, Lord, for your guided hand in all our ways that we acknowledge you, knowing that you will direct our paths. And even with this prayer tonight, we pray it set the tone for the evening, that your holy presence is always here. Lead us and guide us to a way that we use diplomacy, dear Lord, and not offending one another, but coming together, Lord, with an understanding. We pray, Lord, that you will look on our city officials, as well as our police officers, Lord, and the fire department, and those that are in harm's way, God. We pray that you will give them protection as they continue, dear Lord, to protect and to serve. We thank you, dear God, for this opportunity, even during this season of Thanksgiving and during the season, dear Lord, of the birth of Jesus Christ, God, we honor and glorify you. Never give your name to praise, and, God, we thank you, Lord, for these moments that we have prior to this meeting, that you will be in the midst of it all, and that we thank you, Father, for this opportunity to look to you for guidance and direction. We pray thy blessing on this evening, in the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask everybody to indicate their own counsel, that is, to indicate your presence by voting yes. And Madam Clerk, our roll call shows that we have 100 percent attendance in a quorum.
Yes, sir.
Our next item is the approval of minutes of a call meeting of November the 13th, 2017, minutes of a call meeting of November 14th, 2017, and the minutes of a call meeting of November the 14th, 2017. We have a motion to approve.
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Oppose, no. And Madam Clerk, the motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to City Manager's Report, Item 17 Fab 10, which is the consideration of a certain ordinance. And Madam Clerk, would you read the ordinance caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Portsmouth, Virginia, general obligation refunding bonds.
You've heard the reading of the caption, so that we can discuss this matter. Is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion to adopt the ordinance, please vote yes. Oppose, no. And Madam Clerk, the motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to Item 17 Fab 11, which is the consideration of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing the transfer of $331,500 from the non-departmental salary employee bonus line item in the FY 2018 general fund budget to the non-departmental benefits retiree supplemental line in the FY 2018 general fund budget for the purpose of funding a one-time supplement in the gross amount of $500 to certain retirees under the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System and the Fire and Police Retirement System.
Thank you. In order for us to put this before us to discuss and to consider, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and we're ready for, and it's been duly seconded, and we're ready for the discussion, and the Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Cherry.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'm going to abstain from this vote because on December 31st, I will become a part of this group. While I would not be getting that check, I don't want anyone to think that I'm a group that I'm about to be a part of in a few weeks, so I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? We had a motion, and who seconded the motion?
I did.
Okay. Are we good? Okay. Any further discussion?
We have a speaker.
Oh, we do have a speaker. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. The speaker is Mark Gudalge Yatroski. And sir, prior to you coming up and speaking, may I ask the clerk to read the protocol for speakers, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. And sir, you now have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of Council, and fellow citizens. Before I go into my sermon tonight, I'd like to note that I don't think you have a quorum here. You're missing Council members Reggie Allen and Joe Wright. But with that asserted, let me say that I disagree with what you are proposing to do. The two Portsmouth retirement funds, the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System and the Portsmouth Police and Fire Retirement System are both underfunded. The target for retirement funds is 80 percent of outstanding liability with the goal being to reach 100 percent. Since the infusion of money into the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System, $169 million in pension obligation bond funding, the system came closer to that 80 percent target, and it was significantly below that prior to that infusion. But in the interim, it has slipped farther away, and the Police and Fire Retirement System has continued to slide away from the 80 percent mark. So we're moving in the wrong direction. And if there are excess funds, although I'm hard-pressed to see how that could be, when the city ended, $1.3 million below a break-even point last year, meaning that the general fund was reduced by $1.3 million, I don't see where there are surplus funds from last year. And to talk about anticipated savings from the current fiscal year, which ends in July, after one quarter's worth of results in which expenses are running ahead of revenues, to me, that's counting the chickens before the eggs have hatched. So I don't believe that this is a fiscally sound approach that you're taking, and I don't believe the best interests of the citizens or the retirees are being served by this. Again, if you have excess funds, it should be going into bolstering those retirement funds. Because the people who are currently in the system may be dead and gone before those funds run out, but there are still people who have retirements pending who are dependent on those funds. And without enough money in the funds, you'll be coming directly out of the pocket of the taxpayers. So I oppose this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion among council? Ready for the question? The question is, the motion is to approve, adopt the ordinance? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Oppose, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries six with one abstention. Would you let the record show the abstention, please? Thank you. Which brings us to new business, 17 Fab 12, boards and commissions. Is there any report?
No, sir.
Which brings us to 17 Fab 13, items submitted by council members, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, sir. With the holidays approaching, we do have a lot of activities going on in the city. In sort of the order of when they happen, we'll talk about snowing. It will be snowing every Friday and Saturday night at the Children's Museum of Virginia in the 200 block of High Street at 5:30 and 6:30 p.m. through the month of December. I went last Friday when the tree was lit and the snow came down, and the children were there was a huge crowd. The children were so excited. They even have snowballs for the kids to throw that are little bean bags, and it was a lot of fun. That's every Friday and Saturday night at 5:30 and 6:30. In addition to that, the Coleman Collection is now open and on display at the Portsmouth Art and Cultural Center, the old 1846 Courthouse at High and Court Street. That's open most every day and weekend. You can call 393-5258 for more information and hours. We will have on Sunday, this coming Sunday, December the 3rd, there is a benefit event happening at the Mo Mac Brewery in Churchill for our Officer Bacalini, who we spoke about and talked about, who has now gone home from the hospital and is recovering at home. At the Mo Mac Brewery, from 12 noon to 6 p.m. on Sunday afternoon, there will be an event to raise money to assist her in her recovery, and a lot of things for silent auction and that sort of thing should be a lot of fun. On Saturday, December 9th, we have a children's Christmas parade on High Street. In addition to that, later that afternoon, beginning at 12 noon, we have the Umpteenth Annual Holiday Music Festival, where we have all the different musical choirs and choruses and everything to do with music you can think of up and down High Street for the afternoon, which is a wonderful event in conjunction with our partners in Norfolk. And on Monday, December the 12th, we have all of the Portsmouth Public High School choirs in concert together, Wilson, Norcom, and Churchill, from 6 to 8 p.m. at the I.C. Norcom High School Auditorium. The three choruses will be singing together, and that's free and open to the public. So some holiday music continuing on Monday. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Which brings us to Item 17 Fab 14, report on pending items. City Manager, Dr. Patton.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, I call Mrs. Holgup to make a report.
Thank you.
Sorry. Good evening, Mayor, Members of City Council. In regards to comments raised by citizens, I'm providing a summary of the city's current recycling services. The city's five-year contract with RDS ended after two years into the contract by RDS, the recycling provider, on June 28th, 2017. The city acknowledged RDS's termination and subsequently issued an RFP for recycling services on August 8th, 2017. During the RFP process, the city attempted to negotiate with RSD, with RDS, sorry, to provide services beyond the proposed end of their services. However, this renegotiation was unsuccessful. During this interim period, the city, as a member of SIPSA, is using the contractual waste disposal options offered. The options are the Suffolk landfill or Wheelabrator. The city chose to use the local waste management disposal company, Wheelabrator. From November 6th through November 24th, waste management has delivered 230.31 tons of single-stream recyclables to Wheelabrator at the cost of approximately $28,788.75.
Thank you. Which brings us to...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Whitaker. Chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
This is for Dr. Patton in lieu of the report. It was just mentioned that the contract expired June of 2007, and the RFP went out in August of, I'm sorry, 2017, and the RFP went out in August of 2017. What was the delay in causing the RFP to go out two months later?
The RFP process or the development of the proposal that goes out for RDS for RFP process is developed through procurement, and the team that is in waste management, which falls under public utilities, I think they worked tediously in developing a very broad contract, and the timeframe or the difference of what it takes, I cannot speak to that, but they worked very tediously to get it out.
Okay.
I am looking, as I had advised, for a recommendation to be coming from the procurement administrative, hopefully by the end of this week.
Okay, all right. And also, the early termination of the contract, was that unexpected?
Yes, it was unexpected, sir. Because we had a five-year contract with them.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Which brings us to Item 17 Fab 15, non-agenda speakers. And our first speaker is, we have another one? I'm sorry.
I have a correction, Mayor. Mayor, Members of Council, if I may, and answer Dr. Whitaker's question. Although we received the letter in June from RDS, their contract did not end until November 4th. So the actual process of developing the RFP to go out did not start in August. It started probably sometimes in October, and the contract with them did not end until November 4th. Thank you.
Any other pending items? Okay, this brings us to non-agenda speakers, Item 17 Fab 15. And our first speaker is DeAndre Barnes. And sir, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. First, I want to thank Dr. Whitaker and Dr. Patton for letting me, for giving me information regarding grants that you guys have for organizations that's dealing with children. Although I appreciate it, that's not why I came up here last meeting. The reason I came up here, because I would like to work with you guys. I'm pretty sure you guys are like me. You want to save money. So instead of providing, well, giving grants every year to organizations, one of the things I would like for you to do is open up the gyms that you guys have. I think that alone will save not only myself money, but other organizations and you guys. Instead of getting the grants and providing them to somebody else who has a gym, I think it would be better if you guys opened up the gym that you guys have, so organizations like mine can bring our kids in there and save money for you and ourselves. Things like that will be able to help us lower our costs so that we can help these children and provide a resource to them. So that was basically my purpose of coming and speaking to you guys last meeting. I want to partner with you guys so that we can provide a resource, provide activities to these children and provide it at a lower cost. I don't want to be a burden and cost you guys extra money. I just want to be able to help the kids in a cost-efficient way for myself and you guys as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And the Chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, Mr. Barnes. First of all, it's not extra money. Those are funds that are allocated for grant purposes that organizations such as yours, if you don't get it, someone else is going to get it.
Oh, and I, I'm sorry.
And so, also, the issue that you are requesting, the reason I mentioned the grant last meeting is because the school use in gyms, that's under the school board. And so that would be the proper organization to request usage of the gym. I'm assuming you're talking about the school gyms?
Well, just elaborate on that a little. I am going to apply for the gym. We actually in the, I mean, apply for the grant. We're in the process of applying for it now. But what I'm saying is like the gyms that you have, like Mark Herman Gym, Cavill Manor Gym, the Armory, and things like that.
Oh, okay.
And the Portsmouth City, the one on Portsmouth Boulevard. Those gyms.
Okay, yeah.
And Dr. Patton.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, all of the gyms that are owned by the city, and as Dr. Whitaker indicated, there are gyms that are under the school board's auspices, are opened and used. The only gym that remains and should be open within the next couple of weeks is the Sportsplex. But every gym in and operated by cities, parks, and recreation is used with programming. They are not closed. It is also my understanding, and shared with me by Parks and Recreation, that you are in communication with them as it pertains to your league and interest of coming under the Pop Warner umbrella, of which all of our leagues that are registered with the cities, parks, and recreation pertaining to football are under that association. So you are working to come and work with. And if there is an activity, time, or something that you wanted to participate, that it is a program going on, it would be through Mr. Mark Forlow, our Recreation Director, who kind of is already talking with you, and Mr. Superintendent Jones is working with you. So if you continue to work with them, and Mr. Jones indicated this afternoon that you all are making progress, and he thinks finally you're going to come under the umbrella with them.
Yeah, I am working with them. I just wanted to make sure it was understood that I didn't come up here last meeting to ask for any money. I was coming up here to talk to you guys about working together with you guys so that we can use the things that you already have to save money for everybody. And I am, for four years, we were part of a AYF organization, but now, they've been talking to me for years to get, going into Pop Warner, so I'm working with them on that. So I think I will be coming under that umbrella. So I will be working with them on that aspect.
Very good. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker.
Right, Mr. Barnes, I didn't get the impression you were coming to ask for money. We were just sharing that information with you, and actually, I was sharing it with the public. That's why I was asking Dr. Patton to, about the website, so that other organizations as well could be informed.
Yeah, and it wasn't from you. I just wanted to make sure it was understood that, you know, there's other ways that, I didn't want everybody to think that asking for money is the way to change things. Money doesn't always fix the problem. Sometimes you can just use the resources that's already out there. So I didn't say you were doing it, it was just in general.
Dr. Patton.
And lastly, Mayor, the application process for our neighborhood incentive grant program is still open, and we invite the public to submit your applications for consideration for grants. Thanks.
Good. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Donna Si, and ma'am, you have five minutes? Oh, I'm sorry, before you speak...
Before Ms. Si speaks for just a second, Mr. Barnes, just for the record, we're not all guys. On behalf of Ms. Lucas Burke and I, we're not guys.
Ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Last night, there was a joint meeting with the Portsmouth Redeveloping Housing Authority. The highlights given were on two programs. The first one was Dale Holmes Rental Assistance Demonstration Program that said they had completed 64 percent with completion of all 146 units by March 2019. Phase two renovation includes a renovation of 95 of 146 units of remaining 150 units is scheduled to start in the winter of 2018. There are 207 single women and 164 children living in this public housing community. There are six churches in Voting Precinct 13. What are the members doing to assist these women and children who have been abandoned by the fathers, by the fathers? How come we are relying on the federal government to take care of our responsibilities to self-govern? The second highlight was about the work completed in Swanson Homes from Hurricane Matthew, costing over $3 million. The insurance has been filed, but no reimbursement has come in yet. Swanson Homes has 188 single women and 218 children living in this public housing community. There are 13 churches in Voting Precinct 9. What are the members of these churches doing to assist these women and children who have been abandoned by the fathers? How come we are relying on the federal government to take care of our responsibilities to self-govern? How come the churches aren't teaching men that it's their duty to get married and have children under their protection? It's not the government's responsibility to pay for people who are having unprotected sex and bringing forth unwanted children, who we will have to pay for in our public school system. The school system complains all the time about us not wanting to pay for education in Portsmouth. If men and women would choose to abstain from producing children until marriage, maybe we, the people, wouldn't mind paying for the children's education. This is a call for the people to start taking their children to Sunday School and Church and start teaching them natural law. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Garland Alexander, and sir, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor, Chair, Council members. My name is Garland Alexander. I live at 2913 Tan Bart Lane. On behalf of the Police and Fire Retired Association and Local 539, we want to thank you for all your strong support you have given us tonight. The money that we, the money will greatly help many of the retirees in the city of Portsmouth. We realize the city manager struggles to find funding for all the items in the city budget, and we want to thank Dr. Patton for doing this. Thank you again for working with us on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And our last speaker is Pamela Wilkins, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. My name is Pamela Wilkins.
Would you gesture your hand?
I'm sorry. Good evening again. My name is Pamela Wilkins, and I live 805 Elm Avenue, and I'm the president of the Westbury Civic League, and I come to you tonight on their behalf, on the residents' behalf. Before I come with, to tell you what our concern is, I just want to remind everybody, and you all know, as a property owner in Portsmouth, if your grass is 10 inches higher from the ground, you will get a citation. And then you'll be given a length of time to cut the grass. If not, the city will cut it for you and send you a bill. Okay. Our question is, there's a piece of property that's owned by CSX, CSX, on the corner of County and Twine Avenue, and I have a... And I have a picture, so you can see what I'm talking about. Okay, they, that grass has grown 60 inches. And it has become a habitat for wild animals, rodents. We've seen possums, we've seen foxes. And it's, and then not only that, it's eyesore. Last year, we sent a email, well, we reported it. We went to proper protocol and, you know, addressed the city and told them our concern. And they said they was going to send a email to CSX to get them to come out and cut it. Well, nothing happened. So we sent a email to them last year in July, and they responded. And they asked us to send them a picture of it, in which, in which we did. So that was in July. They didn't come out. So we sent a second email, and they requested the same information in October. So after the second email, they came out and cut it. But this is now November 2017, and they have not been back. And we just want to know, is it anybody that could, you know, have the power, authorities, to get these people to cut that grass on a regular basis? And so we're bringing it to you. We didn't went to proper protocol as far as trying to address the city with it and see if they can handle it. Apparently, they're not responding to the city either. So we're coming to you all to see what is our next step to try to get them to cut that grass.
Thank you, ma'am. The chair recognizes that the first person that hit a button was Dr. Patton?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. Our amputus woman, Mrs. Hoag, has been communicating in the channels of which are availed to her with CSX regarding that property and other properties that abut areas within our city. It is not very easy to get major corporations who are not headquartered in close proximity to respond to our requests as the responses that we get when it's something with the state of Virginia or VDOC, to get a tree removed that may be dead. And in three weeks or two weeks, the tree is gone. So what I'm going to ask Mrs. Hoag to do is to provide the information that she has to our building inspection office. And from there, have the determination made and get with legal whether or not the city, cutting the grass and then building the corporation and probably having to go to court to get some response, that we move in that direction with those parcels that are agencies such as CSX across our city.
Thank you. Dr. Whitaker?
Dr. Patton, at our next work session, can you or staff inform us why is it that that property and other properties of that nature are treated differently than residential properties? Is there an ordinance that causes for that difference? And I would like to know that, and if there's no disagreement with council, that we be updated on that.
I don't see any disagreement.
Right, we will provide that information, Dr. Whitaker.
Chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. The same problem exists down I-64, 164 during the summer. I've noticed that that grass too is growing quite tall, even trees. So perhaps a letter to them as well as to CSX from the city manager's office, letting them know that they need to address that, or they will be fined. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker?
That's, that's why I'm interested in finding this out because I know residents are not allowed to go that long with having their grass that high. And I thought there was an ordinance that once a certain number of notices were sent, the grass was automatically cut. And so that's, that's why I'm curious if there's an ordinance difference, yeah.
Good. All right. There's no further business that comes before us tonight. So this meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.